We're at scouts. How do you eat?
Hello, hello friends. How you guys doing this evening?
Friday special peeps.
Yeah, first time on a Friday, love that.
Oh, big deal. How many people we got here? We're two hundred and thirty scouts here already. What do you ask?
What's up everybody?
I've seen some from CBS are already exception based out. What do you ask? And all the lights gonna be alright, yeah?
Yeah, the lights are good. Yeah, you guys, speaking of those lights, I've started Christmas decorating. I got my Christmas onesie on. I got Christmas cookies here.
Well, Christmas doubt.
Yeah, we were jamming out um to some tunes earlier, which was really fun. Yeah, what's up everybody?
Uh, here comes where everyone already knows what you're gonna ask.
Oh, yep. Alright, so let's get her started. So, we wanna know. Where are you from? Where are you tuning in from? What time of day is it? I'm always so curious.
Green falls winter. What do you add?
We are here in Newfoundland and it is what eight o'clock for us right now.
A lot of people don't really even know where Newfoundland is. So, sit here here. How would you explain if someone doesn't know? Um, but actually first you better see.
Okay, Tennessee, New Zealand.
Five P M in Texas.
Yorkshire, Whitburn, New Jersey, Colorado, Elk Bridge, Maryland, Georgia.
Lots of Aussies.
Yeah.
Queensland.
Wyoming, Florida.
North Cal.
British Columbia, B C.
Virginia, Texas again.
Hey, hey Calgary, Norway. Wow, goodness.
So, furthest one away we got. Tarukov, what do you add?
South Alabama.
Armstrong, British Columbia.
Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Scotland, okay, Scotland is pretty far.
That is pretty far.
What else we got? New Zealand, Nova Scotia.
Texas.
Another Scott.
Kelly Gru's China. Sweet, that's probably the farthest, yeah.
Oh dang, Kelly Gru's China.
Wow.
Real? There's a Kelly Gru's here in Newfoundland too, actually. If that's, if that's real, it's pretty cool.
That is super neat. Buffalo, New York, New Jersey. Wow, goodness gracious, Northern Ireland.
Middle Arm Newfoundland, Pike's Arm.
Wow.
U K.
Duluth, Minnesota, Paradise baby. That's right.
Hey, from Ohio.
Yukon, Oklahoma. Oh, different new color than I thought. P E I. Man, awesome. Sweet. Thank you guys so much for joining us this evening.
Oh, thank you. What's that Coco? Coco Jack Brown?
Coco Jack Brown.
Coco Jack Brown, what do you eat?
What do you eat? I got my cup of cocoa here too.
Aruba, okay.
Aruba Jamaica, mm, I wanna take ya.
Oh, boys, welcome back anyway. Uh, I don't even know what number this is. Probably like number five by now, is it?
Now this is number seven.
Is it?
Yeah.
Lord. We're living in a time warp patch here. We really are. Um, living on the island in a bubble, I guess. Kinda working like we do and uh kinda week to week, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I think we talked about it before, but anyway.
I was getting stuff, I was getting stuff out of the fridge to make supper today and I literally had a flashback, like a deja vu. And I was like, ah, I can't wait tomorrow's Sunday. And I was like, oh girl, no, it's not Sunday tomorrow.
Not yet.
Not yet, but she's coming soon.
It's been a pretty big week out here though, doing all sorts of stuff this week from uh building a roof on the new house to uh slaughtering pigs. Bringing a sawmill to the island. There's a sawmill here now. Um, yeah, we've been pretty busy.
Yeah, lots of good stuff.
Yeah, lots of stuff.
Yeah, this week has felt fully on the go, like, oof.
Yeah.
It'll be a nice sleep tonight, but we're not there yet.
Not there yet. It's Friday night special.
Yeah.
Something look forward to. Oh, Coco Jack Brown again. What do you add? I liked the little thingy. Um Guam.
Wow.
Okay, something said they seen a Guam in here. Dang, now that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, piggies are gone. Or not all the piggies. Uh, how many pigs too? We did two pigs.
We have four piggies left.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, we're here again. Hey Camp Scout, yes, talk Camp Scout. Lots of Camp Scout stuff to talk about. Um, something we're actually trying to do tonight. Let me look up here and see. Yes, okay, this should work. So, we talked about before, we got some new technology we're gonna start using to make these streams even better. Um, like some software, make it easier to show you our screen, um, share what we're looking at. Um, and also have guests and stuff on here. We're gonna try to tonight right here in the YouTube platform. Um, and try to have a guest, a guy named Richard who is um, you know, hopefully the new, first new director. That's uh being hired, not hired, but can be added onto the board of directors for Camp Scout.
Yeah.
They came right out of this.
You're volunteering for.
My soup can ice Christmas lights.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Fifty fifty U S, baby. You know how many few U S dollars around here.
Yes, boy. Yes, uh, thank you for the compliment. I actually went to the store and got them myself, brought them back. And rigged them all up. We've got them going all the way around the kitchen. Oh, that's like all the way around the kitchen and also into the bedroom. Because it's really nice at five in the morning when Maddie wakes up, he clicks on the lights for me because he knows I love it. And then I can gently wake up early and it feels like, I don't know, so joyous. Better than a dark room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's rolling over like, can you turn on the Christmas lights? So, you sure? Like, you're gonna sleep for an hour still. She wants them on. John Curry, thank you. Um, yes, anybody who was talking about Richard, he's uh, yeah, the first person we're. But hopefully join the board of directors. Only thing really left to do with Richard is the proper, like the background check. Um, you know, the legal version, the proper version. Um, and other than that, like, Richard seems great. So, I thought it'd be cool to try and get him on here. Just have a quick ten fifteen minute chat with him on here and you guys can see who he is. Um, again, he's a scout. Never knew him before. We started doing these town halls. He's someone that reached out. Um, sent an email with all the information. We started talking, had a few conversations. And uh, thank you Lisa. I love the last name, Lipsy.
Glasby.
Glasby. Fancy. Um, yeah, I think it'd be cool if you guys just be able to see it, right? Because we want this whole thing to be as transparent as possible. Um, while you guys be able to see where your efforts are going, where all this revenue is going. And also who's gonna be helping to run that steer our ship. We need a board of directors to do a proper charity. You need a board of directors. Um, and like we've been saying, it's white collar folk. Richard is that. He's a white collar folk. Not to say he can't get his hands dirty, but uh, you know, he's a business guy and things are moving slower than they, than they could. Um, because right now, we're trying to do the bulk of it and it's, it's busy times.
Yeah.
You can imagine how we live out here and then, you know, I'm up five o'clock in the morning and I'm trying to get down in here and get the fires going quick enough. Send the computer and get an hour of like email type stuff done, um, corresponding with all these different people to try and make things happen. And so, it's a lot. Um, so yeah, we'll talk to Richard and also old Billy Bob. Just talking about playing a couple tunes.
Oh, yeah, buddy.
Friday night.
Friday night little gig here. Yeah, I saw uh last week lots of comments on wanting me to play some tunes. So, I brought the guitar down, dusted off the dust, because it's been a minute. Um, but yeah, I actually uh, I do have a new song for you guys, which is really fun. I think it's nice.
Yeah, why is it warm house? I don't know. Warm soup on a cold day?
Maddie and I were joking about me songwriting the other day and he goes, you just need to write a song that's like called Warm Soup on a Cold Day. I was like, oh my gosh. It could work.
I think it's a banger title personally.
Yes, of course, of course you do. But yeah, no, I'm super excited. So, I'll play one of my, I'll play two of my songs actually for you guys. This evening. Before we do that, we're gonna take care of some business with you guys. Some business with you guys and chat.
So, we're up seventeen hundred twenty-six members. I mean, there's a lot more scouts in the world than that. But that's the ones that are really uh gonna be the backbone of this thing, um, and really trying to push it through. And that's seventy hundred and twenty-six members. You guys have raised with that and also with all the money from these live streams. If you haven't been here before, if you've seen any money pass by your screen in these comments, those are donations. Um, and those are all going to pot for Camp Scout. Uh, so right now, I don't know, we got twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Goodness gracious.
Congratulations, boys. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, that is.
Twenty-one grand? Twenty-one grand. You can buy a lot of nice things for twenty-one grand.
Yeah.
Or like almost a quarter of a piece of land for the camp, hopefully.
Yeah. Yeah, that's amazing.
That's great. Um, congratulations, boys. You guys made that happen. Um, it's a big deal. Um, and now that brings us to another topic. What's happening with that money, right? Because up until now, this has been a YouTube channel. Um, and it is YouTube channel. That's what it is. This isn't a charity. The charity is gonna be its own entity, its own thing. Um, so right now, this money is coming in and just sitting, um, sitting in the bank account, not going anywhere. The charity doesn't have its own bank account. Or anything yet because it's not actually incorporated, um, or registered. You know, where the, the lawyers are on it, but they tell us this, it could be up to a ten month, ten month process. Or, or give or take, um, to get like, um, C R A approved, registered. And again, it's going even a little bit slower too, because we're not on this, as, as fast as we can. Like, if someone was working at this every day, that's all they did, it could move a bit quicker.
Yeah.
Um. Let's see, so what do you guys ever think about setting up their life that isn't Camp Scout late so we can maybe donate help? Rebuild War's Wharf.
Aww.
What a, what a sweetheart.
Divius Fate, you are so sweet and kind.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah.
Dominic, well, thanks Dominic. Um, so yeah, so it's going, just sitting in the bank account. It's not being reinvested, it's not going anywhere, but it's all not being spent. Um, so at the end of the day, that money, once the charity is registered and whatnot, and actually has its own bank account and all that stuff. This money will, will take out our pot from YouTube that we've raised here together and we'll donate it to the charity. Um, and that'll be its, you know, its seed money to get going and, and the backbone keep going. Brings right to another question a lot of people have been asking. Is there a way we can donate and bypass YouTube? Because YouTube takes a cut. Um, for all like these comments, like thank you, um, Ellen.
Elena.
Elena.
They come, they, they come fast.
Um, YouTube takes a cut. When it comes to like the streams and stuff, I think it's like thirty percent. Um. Is that accurate? Yeah. Oh, no, the memberships. I think that thirty percent out to memberships. Um, and then everything else, I think it's sixty forty. So, they take a cut. So, yes, um, we need a way to, not that YouTube isn't great, but bypass, you can just donate directly to Camp Scout. Uh, that'll come with the website and that'll come with being a registered charity. Uh, just need to be also incorporate L F B S. We wanna be able to give you a tax receipt. Uh, not that you might not care about giving, getting a receipt, a tax receipt for your tax time, uh, for fifty bucks. But the big corporations do. You know, those big sponsors that are gonna be giving out the big checks, they want a tax receipt. Um, so in my mind, that's the reason to go through all these extra hoops and all this extra work. I'm gonna try and get a registered charity because we want, we want those big sponsors.
Yeah.
The big money.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, um. Charity status is, um, for sure, that's what we want, you know?
Is it unprofit or charity?
Uh, charity.
Oh, so, so, so.
I'm sorry, I keep, I keep getting my terminology so mixed up. Registered nonprofit, right? Yeah, sorry.
He does get the terms confused.
Status.
Knuckle dragger.
Yes, again, that's why we're gonna need people like the good Richard. Hopefully, you know, you guys give us your feedback. Nothing's on the stone yet. Um, you know, right now, the only board members are myself, Kelly and our friend Albert, um, who we know in person. Um, Richard is the first person that comes directly from the internet and that could be you. Um, maybe not for the board member, maybe for something else. Um, yeah. What's the budget for the land? Good question. Cheap as possible. Um. If we're having to buy a land, the cheapest piece of land that we can see around here, um, that could work. Look, that may be two to three hundred grand. A lot of money. Better to get it from the government if possible. The only problem with that is we need to be the entity first for the government will deal with us.
And it would take a lot longer to acquire the land if we did it through government.
It would. But that's the great thing about the, the memberships. Um, it is only, you know, eight bucks or ten bucks wherever you're signing in from. A month and, and that, that's great. But that, like combined by seventeen hundred people, that rolls over every month. You know, so that continues to get bigger as the snowballs. A twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollar snowball now is gonna keep rolling. Every month as long as all our members stay here. Um, and we'll get the money pretty quick. And not pretty quick, but you know, before spring, we'll have money for land, no doubt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how about some scope merch? Yes, Jay Raz. We got the merch.
We got the merch.
We got the merch. Well, my sister got the merch.
Sis got the merch.
She said it took, uh, how many, how long?
I just had like four or five hours to inventory everything.
So much. Nine hundred and nine hundred something pieces of stuff. And it might not sound like a lot. We're talking about thousands of people that, that want, um, piece of merch. But to, you know, just my sister, they're doing low nine hundred something pieces, a lot of stuff to deal with. And that's how it's gonna be. Like, we don't have a big inventory, so the plan with the merch is.
Yeah.
Um, store will go live, um, real soon. We'll let you know when. We'll give you a heads up. We'll sell those nine hundred and twenty something units that are there from hats and shirts and sweaters. Uh, when they're gone, we'll get another batch made and uh do the same thing. Cause we're, we're trying to do it, you know, um, mom and pop is possible. Right? We're not doing it like you just, you press order and some factory overseas starts printing your shirt. It's not like that. We actually dealt with a real screen printer, um, in Calgary, Alberta. Um, and they're making their shirts for us and you know, we're taking the time to source everything and sis is up there, you know, lugging stuff around and she's gonna ship it herself. So, it's a little bit more homegrown. That's what we want.
Yeah.
We wanna support local if we can, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be really exciting and yeah, we're super excited to get that merch and rep the merch.
Oh, yeah.
I know I am. I'm, I'm excited for a coat hat.
Oh, yeah.
And a sweatshirt, especially now it's getting chilly. Um, yeah, and sis made sure that, of course, like the thing with um, an overseas producer, we're not gonna go travel there to feel everything, touch it, make sure it feels right, looks good. Um, thick or thin, sis went and literally touched every single item of inventory and was like, yep, we like this. We don't like this. We're ordering this X Y Z. So, they're gonna be awesome and I'm sure you guys are gonna love them. And yeah, um, by the time we get them out, they should be, I would say they'd be there in time for the holidays.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yes.
Prince of Edward Island. Mm, do love P E I. I had a wonderful family vacation as a kid over at P E I. I'm in there once, but I'll never forget it. Hmm. Moose, yes, hundred percent. I knew if he doesn't want a moose, boys, let's get real. Okay, we're hanging bogged down in the moose here. Um, alright, let's keep going. So, charity status, trademark. Someone, people were asking for trademark. Trademark is underway. Um, also some people were looking, some uh white collar savvy folks out there was doing some, you know, public uh research or whatever and finding the incorporations of like the Scout Outdoors. Um, there's nothing for the charity. There is nothing for a charity yet because it's, it's not corporate yet. Um, we're still just getting going to lawyers. Um, or feels like anyway.
Yeah.
Again, we need some help here. We're getting, but we're getting bogged down, boys. We're, we're trying to raise the cold. Get firewood and build this house. Then in the morning, we're trying to race around and email lawyers up in Toronto and.
Yeah.
Everything else.
Keep dishes done and everything. Ah, yeah. Yeah, it's definitely a process. Like, I'm sure if you guys have ever dealt with lawyers or any sort of thing like that, it is not fast. And they definitely take their sweet time, which is good. It's actually very good that it's taking a little bit longer. We've all got time to digest, process, chew on what we're doing, um, chew on all the decisions that are being made. And um, yeah, that way things don't rush too quick, you know what I mean? So, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Um, that's not instant, instant. Um, yeah, yeah. How do you buy merch? We are going to open up a website and you'll be able to buy the merch there. It is not live yet, so. Um, so it's never really like, um, oh my goodness. Oh, yes, how do I buy the merch? So, uh, yeah, it'll be a, a scope website. So, you can find it there when it's live.
Okay, yeah, seeing someone was trolling. We tried to add a, a new moderator tonight, couldn't get it set up in time. I know.
That's right.
We just kicked someone here. I think that was it, boys. I see you, little foot.
Yeah.
Kyle Barrow.
Yeah, sorry about the troll guys.
Yeah.
Go back under the bridge. We don't want you here.
Moderators needed tonight, okay?
Yeah. Oh, goodness. Yeah, you guys are alright.
Hey, where you two? Uh, Jay, if you're here, pop up so I can, I can set ya. Where you two? Open Horizon. Give them the boot. Yeah, sorry, boys. We're kinda new to all this, right? Oh, okay.
There we go. We found our buddy. There we go.
There you go. Alright, our boy Jay is in there. Uh, Mitch is there too.
Here we go.
Get out of them, boys.
Get out of them.
We got Jay, who's the top dog over on uh.
The Discord. How, okay, I wanna know how many of you guys are on the Discord here? Um, say, say, say me if uh, if you're on the Discord or did a little wave thing.
Kelly's under flat out. She loves it.
Yeah, I, I just got an account, what, earlier this week? So, I was like, it seems like a lot of fun. Matt's having a lot of fun messaging everybody. So, I finally got one and it is so much fun. Uh, us and the gals have, oh, hey, yes, everybody. Us and the gals have a lovely time over in the hen house. Talking all things like girl things and motherhood and just life in general. It's really fun. It's a really fun spot to be. And I love, one of my favorite things too is like our, it's called, I think it's Picture Perfect or something like that. Or pups or something about animals. Sorry. I'm fresh. And everyone posts the cutest pictures of their animals. We've gotten so many like cats and dogs and Christmas outfits. And we had Halloween stuff when we had, um, it was October. So cute. So, I always love jumping on there and posting little pictures of, you know, Ronnie and Blue Bell too. It's so sweet. How do you join Discord? Oh, buddy.
There's a link.
Fur Baby Fame. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. That's what it's called. Fur Baby Fame. Yes.
Jay is the man who comes all out.
I know. So on it.
And also Jay does another uh scout. Found him through a scout, scout verse.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Scout verse.
The scouter verse, uh, never met the guy before and it's great. There's a lot of great people out there. Jay posted a link. Good idea, someone.
Someone says, you have time for Discord? Question mark, question mark. No, we don't. That's why we have a bunch of moderators. Um, every like, I don't know, once or twice a day, we pop in and say a little something here and there, a little howdy do. But uh, no, we're definitely not moderating it. Um, that's why we've got our little crew, our scout crew there.
Yeah, it's all about building a team. Um, and that goes for everything. That goes for Camp Scout. That goes for the charity. Uh, with a board of directors. That goes for a bunch of knuckle dragger team that wants to come out here and build a camp, help build a camp. Go build hiking trails, put tent sites out, whatever it is. Uh, we need real people. Um, and a big team. And you know what? There's no shortage of it. We're getting so much, um, offers of support. So much offers of support from people. Um, with that, if you have sent an email offering support. Um, or the board member, um, application, have her back, stand by, um, it just takes time, like.
Yeah.
I don't know how people do it. Um, I sit here in the morning, you know, maybe five thirty for an hour, um, if I'm lucky. And uh, maybe not even sometimes. I'm like, like doing some emails and, and the, the business type stuff and uh. Phew, and that's tough work.
Yeah.
And I really see how you can get caught up in it. Um, the whole business mentality of it and the, you know, the email game. And like just needing to keep up on stuff and having deadlines and stuff. Oh, we gotta find this because someone needs that. And it's like, oh, they smokes. It's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so all of our moderators and all of our scout team up on Discord is really, really lightening the load and making it a fun place to be. Um, yeah, it's really nice just to pop in there every now and again and just be like, what's everybody up to? Um, and personally for me, I like it way more than like a Facebook or Instagram, social media, because you don't actually like get crazy hooked on it. You can just go like, what's up everybody?
Yeah.
And then roll out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like somebody said, you guys have time for that? No, not really. We just like jump on here and there.
Yeah.
Um, but it's really nice for that. And it's just like checking in with friends that like, online friends that you don't really know, but like you get to know in a really intimate way. Um, without a bunch of, you know, I don't know, likes and pictures and I don't know, it's, it's really cool.
Distractions.
Yeah, it's just distractions. It's just people who wanna hang out and connect and, and grow a closer bond together. So. All you guys on Discord, what's up ladies? Meet me in the hen house. It's super fun in there.
Um, should we try and add Richard?
Is Richard ready? Are we ready?
I think Richard, I, I'm, I'm assuming he's ready. Richard, if you're watching, stand by. We're gonna try and send you the link.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna test this out, peeps. Uh, see if it works. This is on YouTube platform. Um, we're still waiting on a couple pieces of kit and able to use a camera to live stream this. And that's when we can use other software where we can like share our screens and like show slides and do presentations. We can really scale this up. Um, but right now, we're just gonna try and call Richard and see if he can ping in here.
Yes.
Let's try it.
Can you give Willow a hello? Hello Willow? I love that name. I'm wondering, is Willow a person or a dog?
Willow's definitely a person.
Let's see what we can do here. Ever consider shaving the beard? He actually did a while back. He did a while back. He said, I gotta trim. And he walked by and took the little buzzer thing, went outside at the window. Oh.
Oh, 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 shoot.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Sorry, sorry.
I like this background a lot better. That's so funny.
Hmm, this isn't easy as I thought.
Hmm. Wonder.
Does anyone tell us how to do it? Stand by, Richard.
Great screen, Kelly. Aw, my bunny is named Willow. That's so cute. I would love a bunny, but it wouldn't last long out here, which is really sad. I used to have sugar gliders when I lived in Virginia. I had four sugar gliders. The little like mini flying squirrels, I guess.
I don't know. Uh, I'm sure I've seen a thing that said add someone to the call.
Captain Richard. Yes, where's yet?
Hmm.
Yeah, presumed hostile. Aren't they so cute? Now, I have to say, the little chirp noise they made at night, it literally traumatized me and I'd wake up instantly. Oh, and I had such a rough time going back to bed. But they are so cute and I don't think we can have them here. Not working?
No, I know I've seen it here before. It's. Hmm.
Hmm.
Yeah, we'll explore.
It's okay. You keep messing with it. I'll keep talking to everyone. Uh, Kelly Smith, how old are you guys? I'm twenty-seven. I just turned twenty-seven like last week. Maddie is thirty-four. And our dogs are eight and four. Blue Bell's eight. Ronnie is four or five.
Alright.
Someone said, what's not working? We were trying to add our buddy, um, Richard into a call. He's got some good stuff to talk about today for Camp Scout.
Yeah, he was gonna call in. No audio.
Alright, let's see.
Yeah, we're, we're, does anyone here know how to add a person on YouTube live? There is a way to do it. Backflip man. I'm sixty-six. Good for you, B J K.
Yeah.
Oh, man, okay.
What about Gordy? Gordy's out tonight playing darts with the boys. Friday night is their dart night. So, every Friday, you can find him at the darts, dart hall. I hope he's getting good numbers tonight.
We want Gordy. We gotta get Gordy in here some night, right?
I know. You know what's so funny is, yeah, he always like, Hank comes over and we'll just walk in the house. We'll have a yarn for like an hour and a half and just hang out and chill. So, yeah, we'll have to get him to come out here. These nights while we're doing this and just chat with you guys, because I'm sure y'all have lots of questions for Mr. Mayor Gordy.
I can't figure it out, boys. Sorry, boys. Um, we'll try again next week. Hopefully next week, we can get Richard on here. Sorry, Richard, if you're watching. I'm sure you are. Um.
Dink and doink. Yo, hey, right? I knew, I was like, dink and doink. I think I know who that is.
Oh, so glad you seen that.
Oh, yes, that's awesome. What up, brother?
Yeah, you're right. Stinking doink here. Yeah, relax, Adam. That's right.
Yes. Oh, that's our.
Okay, tap to call. Okay, tap to call, share the invite link with the person, okay.
Okay, okay.
That doesn't work. Uh I don't wanna get bogged down on that. We're just gonna sit here and stare at it, right?
True.
I'm I'm sure we can get it figured out, but if one starts green, just.
Yeah, let's figure it out.
Yeah, we'll get Richard here next week. Richard's not going anywhere. Um I'll let you know he is a beauty. You know, never met the guy before, but he seems like a beauty, right?
Yeah, he does. Yeah. Someone asked about the shower. Are we gonna have a standalone shower? Are we?
Standalone shower on top of the tub?
I think we're doing just the cast iron tub with like a little thing.
Yeah, would it be? Yeah, good question, actually. I always picture come right out of the ceiling.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we'll see.
Oh yeah, we'll definitely see. Yeah, the thing is coming together pretty darn fast. I'm very excited for it. Oh my gosh, yo, I'm glad I found this vengeful fox. Will you get an elf on the shelf? Okay, it's really funny you say that because when I went to the store to get all these Christmas lights, I went alone and Lord knows me, I get excited about things. I saw the elf on the shelf. And yeah, I I got one. I got an elf on the shelf. I'm really excited. Uh just to stick him in all these random places and doing funny things.
I said, for who? She's like, for you.
For you, yeah, but also for me. And I read the little elf on the shelf book and I was like, this is actually pretty cute. I like, I like how it keeps the Christmas spirit alive.
Yeah, come up.
I know.
One night Kelly's are laying in bed by herself, like all jammed up in bed, just reading Elf on Shelf book. When I seen Elf on Shelf thing first, I was like, wow, they've figured out a way to reinvent Christmas again. Geniuses, genius. Also, I wanna check, show me the elf on the shelf, how it comes. And like you can actually open it up before, but I open up and look at the elf on the shelf and it's the whole thing. Genius.
I was like, aw man. And we also have like a funny name, um anyway, for him. It's part of our Christmas tradition. Last year we made up a name about like our version of like the Bay Santa who comes around rolling a dory. And um yeah, we're gonna name him Gossip. That's his name, Gossip.
Gossip.
Gossip is coming on by.
Oh, there's a lot. We can't go get any gossip here, right, Spocky?
Yes, I know.
For the anonymous.
I know. Yes, you can get super creative with elves on the shelf. Exactly. It's really just like a fun, little, easy, creative thing.
See, see that? That one's right. Be careful in introducing it to your kids. You'll need fresh ideas every exam or until they're fully grown. They're smart and it gets tough.
That's why I'm practicing this year.
I agree. I agree with you, Derek. I'd say no elf on shelf. Yes, me. Scout on the boat. And that's an idea.
Yo, I like that.
I like that.
Scout on the boat. Little Kate really wrote like posted up places. Kinda like that. Scout on a boat.
You also do drone food. We do, we do.
You gotta read the the Advent Slather, Bubby.
Do I? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
The Daily Grind Florida. Thank you, brother. Lots of Florida.
Yes, Laura, uh my grandma used to get us advent calendars when I was a kid and they were always my favorite thing. We had little chocolates that came out of them and I was like really hard not to pop open the next day. Cause you want that chocolate so bad.
I was a kid that just ripped the whole thing off him. Three days and I'd tear the whole thing off and I've done it with my sister before too. Probably ate hers.
You ate your sister's? Oh my gosh, you are crazy.
Oh, good question. Well, Kelly's celebrate Thanksgiving next week since she's not in Canada, not in America. I never even knew it was Thanksgiving. You prayed neither, did you?
I I know it's Thanksgiving next week, cause my, I've been chatting with my mother. And she's got the whole family coming up and my goodness, we have a huge family, so I know it's a big deal. You know? We should have like a turkey or something. Turkey, mashed potatoes, gravy. I used to make this cornbread casserole thing. It's like two boxes of like the Jiffy cornbread mix, a bunch of sour cream, butter, creamed corn. Basically that's it. Mix it all together and you bake it in like a casserole dish. It's so good. Like two die for it and then you serve it with sour cream on top. And I cannot find for the life of me anywhere here. I really can't find the Jiffy um cornbread mix. So I'm like, what the heck? Gotta go make my own cornbread recipe, I guess.
No cornbread up here in Newfoundland, girl.
I know. No sweet tea either. You guys would freak out. My Americans would be like, no sweet tea at McDonald's? Huh? What? But it's true. No sweet tea. I asked one time and they were like, what are you talking about? I was like
Ain't no sweet tea up here, girl.
I know.
North of the border now.
Yes. That's true. Also at the KFC, they don't have like mashed potatoes and gravy or like hot mac and cheese, like cheesy mac and cheese. It's just gravy in a little cup and um macaroni salad. So I was severely disappointed because I really wanted the mac and cheese and the um mashed potatoes.
Oh, 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 thank you, thank you. Kimberly Roberts, have you got Kelly to agree to the name cooler yet?
Girl, heck no.
Oh, you know, I kinda forgot. I didn't forgotten about it, but I've kinda been off it for the past little while. Thank you for reminding me.
It's it's high up on Maddie's um list.
Brandon Moulton, Marytown, Newfoundland, brother, what are you saying? A bunch of French speakers around now. Saint Pierre, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's it.
It's true.
It's another French place here. Little known fact, Newfoundland. Actually here to be in Pinza, like the peninsula that we're off of. There's an island, it's only like uh sixty four miles or something right from here. Um it's off coast Newfoundland, only by a couple miles. And it's France. It's called Saint Pierre and actually France. Like it's a whole different country. It's just right there. If they wanna go to Walmart and stuff, they gotta get a ferry and come in into Newfoundland, go to Walmart and all that stuff. So they got none of that over there. Um but it's France. They got their own bars and hotels and full town over there. Um never been. A lot of Newfoundland's actually haven't. Yeah, it's France.
I'd be super excited to be like, let's go to France this weekend and just like roll over there, jump on the ferry. And yeah, go get some like fresh baguettes and stuff.
I've seen that there are direct flights from there to Paris, or not there to Paris, there to France. Like you you go like sixty four miles that way to France, Saint Pierre, here in Newfoundland. It's basically Newfoundland, but it's France. Jump on a plane from there. They have their own airport too. That's what it says online anyway. I'm kinda skeptical from what I hear of Saint Pierre. I don't know. And fly straight, direct to Europe. I mean, that's wild. Anywhere sponsored, Richard. Uh no. Sent them one more email since last time you guys talked. Full kind of write up, um on Camp Scout. That was it.
In process, in the talks, I'm sure. These things don't happen overnight. Big corporations need to go through like eighty five different handshakes to get the, you know, nods to get the yes. How far can you safely boat to? Um depends on what boat we take. Cape Melly, you could get pretty darn far, I think. You wouldn't wanna cross the ocean in Cape Melly.
Depends how far you're talking. I mean, you could.
Oh, yeah, I guess you could. It'd take a lot of fuel. Right up with a couple sails, I suppose.
Some of cheap booze. Saint Pierre got cheap booze, yep. That's like, you know, this sounds funny. Um I read some books on that last winter, did a lot of reading last winter, like Newfoundland um stories, Newfoundland history books. Just to pass away like those long nights and uh or long mornings, really. For reading. And uh read some books on Saint Pierre and like the booze running. And Newfoundland has got like, it's part of the culture here in Newfoundland. It's it's in the roots of running booze from Saint Pierre. And not just us, like the American culture, the American booze culture is tied to Saint Pierre too. Al Capone.
Oh, yeah.
Was up here getting Saint Pierre booze and getting it down to wherever he's going, Boston or New York, I guess. Um and slinging it off. Same with Jesse James's brother. What's his name? Can't remember his name now. Someone James, but Jesse James, his his younger brother. Was up here back, back, back in the day. I'm offshore in a ship and and he'd be here going in to find a fisherman to do, run Saint Pierre for him and like running booze back back to the States. It was a big thing.
So cool.
Frank. That's it. Frank James, presumed hostile. Man, look at that. Wow, that's impressive.
Yes, that's right. Damn, you guys are smart. You guys are quick.
Frank and Jesse James, there you go. Wow, dang. Are you building Newfoundland door colds up for fun? Thanks, Billy. Rachel and Mary Keith Britain.
I feel like there's not much we're doing just for fun these days.
Definitely one route seller. I mean, you you want, you live near Bay, Newfoundland, you want route seller. Um it's not gonna happen tomorrow. Probably not gonna happen next summer. Uh but it's definitely in the list, one of those things. Like once we're at the point where you put in a small greenhouse, route seller.
Yeah, I'd like for it to look like a cool little hobbit house or something like that. That'd be really cool. Circle door and everything. A little impractical, but it looks cool.
Uh so I was getting corporate for the nonprofit, what's next? I'm doing this for the camp. Um same as last week. Abide our time for one, because like the the law's gotta do its thing and they gotta get all their ducks in a row and registrations and blah, blah, blah. Keep doing what we're doing here, having these talks about it, um raising the funds like we're doing, already up over twenty grand. And again, building the team. We need a board of directors, we need help. Uh me and Kelly, we need help. We can't do it all ourselves. We're trying to do something pretty big here and yes, it's something I've been dreaming of for years and years. Uh but now that like in that first video, whenever it was, almost two months ago now, when it was like, yep, okay, guys, we're doing this. And then all of a sudden it was real. I guess really sinking in how much there is to it. There's a lot to it. And it's easy to go, yeah, there's a lot to it. A lot to it. I mean, a lot to it for a guy like me. Um it's quite a bit. And it's a lot of like stuff that's not in my wheelhouse. A lot of jargon, a lot of legal jargon, paperwork type stuff, a lot of email type stuff, coordinating with people. Uh I'm not a coordinator. Anyone that actually knows me knows I'm not a coordinator, cause you can't get a hold of me. I'm in here in the morning referring me, the phone is there and that's it. It's on silent all the time. Most times it's on snooze, so if you even do call, it goes right to voicemail. Um I don't wanna be not that I'm too busy, I just don't want the phone to have that control of me, you know, where it dings from some kind of notification, oh, oh, look, oh, great. You know?
Forty five minutes later.
Yeah, forty five minutes later.
You're like, whoa, goodness. Yeah, no, I think it'd be a lot for anyone, my darling. It's it's a big thing, you know?
But yeah, we're gonna keep going slowly, slowly. Um and we're doing it, boys. We're up over twenty grand. We got it. We got people in place. There's scouts coming right from these chats into real, real helping us. Um like all the crew that's over on Discord now. Um Chris over in Ireland, who just finished doing the Camp Scout logo. And first Camp Scout um designed for a T-shirt. Pretty big deal too. And I gotta tell you, boys, it's deadly. It's, he did a really, really good job. Uh he offered his services up for free, completely volunteered to do that for Camp Scout and that's his offering. And we'll be sharing that real soon. Uh and guys like Richard, there's other people in talks of with too. Um we could help and there's people. They're gonna help, they wanna help. Slowly, slowly.
Light hand or many hands make light work. You guys are definitely showing up and being a part of it, which is wonderful.
Hey, Auckland, New Zealand. Love the Aussies. We love you. We love you too, my wife.
One in the morning in Denmark. Oh my goodness. Well, good morning to ya.
Welcome to Camp Scout, giggly doobie. Hold on, saying that right?
You're like, ah, you're so, you are not teaching the kids how to read or how to pronounce anything.
Think when I read, when I read a book ahead, it sounds perfect. Who knows the information I'm getting?
Makes perfect sense to you. Oh my goodness. Don't forget the stuffing with your turkey. Yes, true. I gotta, I gotta remember that. Someone said gangly doobie. Oh, you guys are so funny.
I smoked a gangly doobie. If you live in Alberta. Happy Canadian, how you doing? Well, boys, yeah, this is great. This is Friday night. Um you know what? It's good that it's on Friday night. We kinda planned it last night. Shit, got real. And also with the whole town hall meeting, we said right from the beginning, when I told Kelly back before I let you guys all know we're doing Camp Scouts. Um I was like, hey, yeah, I'm gonna do the a weekly livestream. I was like, don't worry, don't worry, it's gonna be super um chill and uh structured. You know, we can be really nearly, we can do it from anywhere, anytime, any day. No structure. It's not like the Sunday video where it's gotta be on Sunday at the same time. Um so it's kinda good. It's good to switch it around, you know?
It is. It is good to switch it around. That way, you know, we're fresh. And we're really like ready to connect with you guys, you know? You never wanna do it if you're not feeling it, right?
Yeah, it's good to have the flexibility. Also gives other scouts a chance to
Jump in. Who might not be able to make the Wednesday or the Thursday. Now we've tried Friday. So I think Friday's pretty darn good. How do you get mail? We have a P O box in the nearest town.
Near Big Town.
Near is Big Town, yes. And I love our postal workers. The ladies are so nice. I always love catching up with them. Oh yeah, someone put the address there. Well, perfect. There you go.
Charlie Porter, thank you, Charlie. Yes.
Do you miss having a TV? I miss on a little bit. I miss having a TV. I used to have one in my bedroom up on the wall. Um I had a cool art piece that like clo- enclosed it, so it looked like a like a, I don't know, like Aztec sort of wooden thing. That was really cool, but I do miss watching Outlander in bed because it was just like such a bingeable show and I could, but I really stayed up way too late, so that part, I'm glad I don't have it. Cause yeah. Or I'd be playing like Red Dead Redemption and like up all night playing that too, cause I love that video game. If I could get one video game, it would be R D R two, I have to say. It's not like such a gamer saying like the acronym, but you know, the music and the soundtrack is really good. Plus like being cowboy is pretty rad.
People liked Red Dead, yeah. Some people, I'm sure lots of people here know.
Yeah, Red Dead, that's right. I used to listen to the ambient music in the morning, just to like get myself in a cool, chill mood. That's a good thing. I know. We're on that topic, sorry.
S O California South. What's that, Socal?
Southern California. Southern, Socal.
Yeah, look, Red Dead is hot.
Yeah, man. Heck, yeah. Yeah, um I love robbing the trains. I love robbing the trains, but one time my horse died and I was so sad. That was the worst part of that game. Never finished.
Daryl Harvey, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Daryl.
Landerscope, watch your Sunday, brother.
Yes, sir.
Love that. Love Newfoundland Scouts. Newfoundland Scouts are a rare breed. Newfoundland Scouts are a rare breed. Newfoundland Scouts are a special breed.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, we love seeing you guys out and about.
Socal too. Well, are we gonna play some tunes or what? We got a, we got a seven o'clock here. Um this is the town hall meeting is our late night on a perfect night, about eight thirty. About about eight thirty, getting off of bed is is perfect to me. Fall asleep, you know, nine ish. Um we're not gonna get that tonight, but it's crack on. Pam, thank you, wow.
I'll grab my guitar.
Smokes, Brandon, Hunter smokes.
Brandon.
You gotta live my dream, but hope to have one day. Thank you for the grief videos. How is your solar holding up? Thank you, sir. Brayden? Brayden, yes. Um solar's holding up great. No problem with the solar. Uh all that wind, all those storms, never budge. A lot of people had doubts in that little setup that we built. Didn't they, huh? Huh? Uh didn't go anywhere. Solid, like a rock. Thanks for asking. Well, thanks, Nippy PK. Boys, God love you. Um people sending in donations. Don't even feel like you need to. It's great if you do, but we're just happy to have you here. There's power numbers, people. We're here. We got a lot of, we got a lot of numbers together, a lot of people. Um and we're doing it. It's happening. Um things are slow, but that's how, that's how it goes. But before long Sunday video, we'll be breaking ground into our new piece of land with a bunch of scouts. Where they're volunteering their time and uh putting up Camp Scout and we're showing it all over here. And what was that? It's gonna be great. Tip me mid-tender.
How many Scout members now?
Uh seventy hundred twenty six.
How far along are you, are you? Cody, I'm twenty one weeks. Apparently the baby is the size of a large banana. That's like insane. Yeah, I'm only a lefty on the screen. I play righty.
It's all flipped, cause we're using the cell phone, right? And we're using the screen facing screen. This is, we're still babies when it comes to whole livestream game. It's all on the cell phone right now. It's all on the cell phone right now.
Yeah, buddy.
I'll send you, give you name a Discord channel, um someone put in the comments Discord channel, I'm sure.
Alright, well, I'm gonna play a couple songs, I honestly have to say I feel a little bit nervous.
Do you? You got eighteen hundred twenty-five people watching, you're about to play a song. She just wrote one today.
Yeah, I'll play that one second. Warm myself up with a.
Didn't even get back from a flick, I'm so close to.
No, 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 you're fine. What kind of guitar? This one is just a little little buddy I picked up when I first came here to Newfoundland last year, it was the first stop. Off the airport, this is called a Beaver Creek, never heard of it of it before, it was like two hundred bucks, so I was like. And it's like laminate, so I was like, I can get water splashed on that, don't matter, so. It's not really the guitar that matters, I suppose, it's how you play it and how you, yeah, I don't know, just the the energy you bring to it, I guess. Anyway.
Also, boys, uh bear with us, it says off a cell phone, there's no microphone, uh. No nothing, so might be, I'm not even sure how it's gonna sound, and I know Kelly sounds wonderful, but I mean it might be hard to hear. Through through the phone, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you never know, I think it'll be alright.
Yeah, we'll uh we'll do a better overtime. Free bird, somebody wants free bird.
You know what's so funny, every time I played guitar and shows with my sister, someone always requested free bird. I don't know it, so I've never played it, alright. We'll do a wooden boats and iron men. Yeah, buddy. No, yeah, I haven't played that one in a minute, that's a that's a fun one. Yeah, I wrote that uh at the kitchen, at this kitchen table, when it was back in that room, what last in the winter, like February, something.
Something like that, yeah, it's been a minute.
Yeah, has been a minute, gosh, it's almost been a year.
Almost been a year.
What?
Like that was new song.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Yeah, that's insane to think of.
Oh yes, guys, love it. Wooden boats are men, such an awesome title.
Thank you, I actually first heard that um from my buddy Smitty. Smitty has, he is ren- world renowned and known for his one-liners. Um growing up in the twine lofts of the fishing stages and fishing stores up here, um and yeah. So I know some of you guys say you can't understand him, but when you can, he says like the funniest things and his one-liners are off the charts. And one of his things is like, oh, when the, when the, what was it? And it's true, and I, as soon as he said that the first time, I was like. I have to write that down, that is literally so good, and I wrote it in a in a little journal, and I was like, damn, that's good. And um when I wanted to write the song like altogether, I was actually trying to write a little tune about like our neighbor Patrick. Cause he grew up out here and um I was like, hmm, how can I do something from like maybe Patty's point of view and. You know, tie all that stuff in together and it just like. Flew down from the heavens, so that was really fun that it came together like that and. Yeah, and yeah, his wife Judy, she feeds the birds all the time, out the window is the gray jay, so I think that's also pretty sweet.
Yes, original song, Tyler. Yeah, I know, amazing, hey, she wrote that out there or this table out there?
Yeah, I wrote that song, that's original. A Kelly Clark original, technically the first Kelly Clark original.
Alright, tell them now, we're about to, or Kelly is about to sing another original song she just wrote today.
Yeah, this afternoon while Maddie was watering and feeding the rest of the piggies, yeah.
No one's heard it, only people have heard the song up until now, myself and Kelly, Kelly's played the song what, three times now?
Yeah, I think like three times.
Three, four times, so um you're about to hear a brand new song. Congrats for being here, thank you for being here.
Be nice to me, I barely know this one.
Addy on percussion, I agree.
Yes, we gotta get you an egg shaker.
Oh, yeah, I would be a good egg shaker guy.
Yeah, dude. Alright, this one's a wee bit slower, but we'll go for it.
How good is that?
So I don't have a title for that one, something about home or something like that, you know, but.
Warm soup on a cold day, man.
Warm soup on a cold day. Thank you, guys, I was nervous about that one, just cause it's so fresh, I'm like literally like like sweating.
Brand new, brand new, went feed it, went to water and feed the pigs afternoon and came back, heard the music playing.
Yeah, I pretty much wrote that one, uh yeah, because you got, I saw so many comments last time about you guys wanting me to play more tunes and. And all that and I was like, you know what, I probably should write something new, should write something new. And it doesn't always have to take forever to write a song, you know? That was a pretty quick one.
Same wooden boats are men, you wrote that while you were washing dishes, I think.
Yeah, or after or something like that, yeah, in between, in between chores on a dark day, yeah.
Thanks, boys, God love you all, boys, Matt needs to dance, I agree, I gotta get something going, I gotta be dancing. Life feels same play the spoons, I need to do something, hundred percent, at very least, uh sand shaker, egg shaker.
I cried too on that one, but I'm an old sap, oh, Missy, I love you, that's so sweet. Oh, you guys are so sweet, Maddie needs matching jammies, I tell you, I couldn't find another size. Oh, a triangle.
It's a rhythmic, yeah, there you go.
Get you an ugly stick.
That's awesome. Oh, boys, you guys are so awesome.
Yeah, you guys are so sweet, thank you so much.
Ugly sticker spoons. Kelly hasn't tried her hand an ugly stick yet, believe it or not.
I feel like that'd be decent.
I feel like he would do.
I'd like to make my own, that'd be fun.
There you go, guys, it's pretty cool, hey, you unveil a new song like that. Tear over in YouTube, first time it's been heard anywhere.
Yeah, that's pretty crazy. Yeah, I used to have a lot of like nerves before singing, especially online. But you guys make it really easy, I have to say, I'm just here literally chilling in my Christmas pajamas in my kitchen, so this is pretty great.
You can't see it, but I'm in my should've stayed home pants also. Which is, you know, my favorite pair, you know, twelve dollar Walmarts. They can just blow it for days and then. Throw it in the corner and wait for wash day.
That's right, yeah, we just had a fresh shower at Hotel Gourd before this. So we're nice and squeaky clean, which feels very nice, and uh yeah, we had a wonderful time with you guys tonight.
Yeah, boys, thanks for being here, uh look at.
Yeah, who else is in their jammies? Let me get a me, little hands up, who else is in your jammies, I know for some of y'all got a, it's morning.
I do have pants on, I just see it out, uh yeah, guys, uh Richard, if you're out there, apologies, Richard, um. Never had to work, we'll have to wait for like hit, I guess, so that we can do this all through the. Big camera and laptop and have more control over it.
I was just saying that, I love that everyone's in their freaking jammies, yeah.
Is everyone sane right now?
Yeah, I told, I said, tell me if you're in your jammies. Twelve thirty AM in Ireland, good lord, Arthur, well, after this ends, you better get to sleep, oh, my goodness.
How's the wash machine, a washing machine is mint.
Mint. I I saw some of you guys' comments about like the rust and stuff on the feeder part and a lot of concerns about like. The rollers and fingers and hair and things. I've heard lots of stories, especially from a lot of um new fees out here too, whose parents, grandparents all had these sort of washers and they all grew up with them. So I definitely will be keeping my hair back, um no long fluffy dresses or or like. Shirt things that, oh, when I did laundry and I bought some wooden spoons to keep on hand, just in case things get stuck. Or also to push the clothes through, so I don't have to use my fingers, cause I wanna be able to play guitar forever and be able to hang out with my babies and. Yeah, not have broken hands and fingers, that would be not so good.
I like the idea of the emergency wooden spoon in your back pockets.
Yeah.
Have a switch foot, yeah, a foot switch. Not bad idea.
Yeah, someone said they got their hands stuck and when it was fine, I'm sure, I'm sure, especially if they're not too tight on the rollers. Oh, don't worry about the kids, the kids will be fine, goodness gracious, yeah, we're uh. Yeah, the kids are gonna be fine, I mean, if they did this like three gen- two, even like one generation ago, two generations ago, like. We're all just used to automatic button pushing things, like that's pretty true.
Keep your fingers under rollers, kid, I guarantee you one thing, he'll only get his finger cut in that roller once.
Just like the cat, the cat only sits under the rocking chair once. I burned my butt cheeks when I was a kid on the fireplace, little great thing and like right through my Christmas PJs. Never sat or stood that close to the fireplace again, you definitely remember and uh yeah, I'm. I'm not too worried about the kids, they'll be fine, I highly doubt they'll be trying to reach up there and help me with laundry anyway for like years.
There you go, Peter, because my mom with six children needs a wringer washer. Totally approve.
That's right. Yes, give me some tough kiddos out here.
Oh, toasty. Okay, boys, what time is it there? It is nine oh six and. Favorite part of the day, shutting her down, boys, we love you, thanks for being here. Um we'll continue to grow this together, continue to grow the community, um Camp Scout, um. Make these uh interactions, these weekly events even better, um with time, as we get the better software and whatnot, figure out how it all works. Um yeah, thanks for being here.
Yes, we love you guys so much, thank you all for saying your your sweet messages and your good nights, we hope you guys have a lovely sleep, a good rest. And wake up bright eyed and bushy tailed tomorrow morning and same thing on Sunday morning where we will see you next.
See Sunday's goats, love you.
Love you, guys, thanks for listening. Signing off, adios.